Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Willmar City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Beggarly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. It's our practice to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a full city council chambers here. I would like to ask people by the door if any citizens come in late to direct them up to the front. We've got some chairs to the left of the podium here, to the right of the podium as you look at it. So help them out if they come in a little bit late. Tonight we have three scheduled public hearings. The first one has to do with a bond issue, and then we have the 2007 street improvement hearing, and then we have a public hearing regarding some tax forfeited property. And then we'll go on into our committee minutes. And again, I'd like to welcome all the citizens who've taken their time to come here tonight for this meeting. Now to the agenda and the matter at hand. I'd like to ask the city council if there's any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda. Seeing and hearing none, we will go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, for the consent agenda. And tonight, that includes the minutes of the past city council meeting on February 5th, the utilities commission minutes of February 12th, the hospital board minutes of February 14th, the transit board minutes of December 8th, the police commission minutes of December 14th, the housing and redevelopment commission minutes of January 9th, the senior council minutes, that's from the senior citizen center, of February 2nd. And there's also a recommendation to appoint one of our citizens to the library board, Mr. David Hertzler. Are there any comments from council members? Councilmember Reese.
Mr. Mayor, at our Public Works Public Safety meeting, we had a discussion in regards to the senior council minutes, and I believe there needs to be some action. Is that taken during this point, or is that when it should be?
Okay. Do you want to pull those minutes?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, he's just going to pull those minutes. Are there any other wishes of the council members? As the mayor, I'd like to pull the minutes of the utilities.
That's Jim who's raising his hand over there.
Who did? Jim? Who?
Jim.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull the Rice Hospital Board minutes.
The Rice Board minutes? Anyone else? Okay, I would like to still pull the minutes of the utilities, the utilities commission. And let's go to Councilmember Reese on the senior council minutes.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think maybe I'd rather defer to Councilmember Dacken since he's been there, but it's in regards to the senior dining. And I guess he was at, you were at the meeting, were you not, Jim?
I was.
Okay. Jim, do you want to say something about this?
I just wanted to initiate some discussion on the sighting of the meal site at the senior center from the VFW. And I know there are some folks in the audience that may want to make some comments, and so I will reserve my comments until those that are here would like to speak. I see that the senior center liaison person is here.
Okay. For the people in the audience and people who are watching the meeting on television, this is the issue about the fact that the senior meal site, which we call congregate dining, is now held at the VFW club here in Willmar on the east side of town. And the VFW club has given notice that that congregate dining site will no longer be there after March 1st, and that's what's behind this discussion. And maybe, LeAnn, are you ready to offer some comments about this?
Thank you.
LeAnn, would you explain what your position is?
My name is LeAnn Freeman. I'm a recreation supervisor for the community education and recreation department, and I'm also the senior center coordinator too out there. On February 7th, we had a senior council meeting in regards to the meal site. We were approached by Lutheran Social Services and also West Central Industries as looking for another site to serve these meals, with the VFW closing the doors to them on March 1st. And they came out, and we've had like three discussions with them. We've had it at the community and rec advisory board meeting, and then we met with them at two separate meetings, and then at this senior council meeting. We brought the information to the seniors, the council, I should say, and they approved, or actually they're recommending to you that they move the meal site, March 1st, out to the senior center.
All right. Councilmembers, do you want to ask some questions at this point, or say anything about this? Councilmember DeBlick?
LeAnn, to accomplish that, is there any improvements or any capital needs that need to be done at the senior center?
There are some needs that we do need to address. There are some we don't, which we don't have to, I'll start with the, we don't have to address, is Lutheran Social Services is going to take care of the special license to have the meal out there, the food license, I should say. And they will also take care of an additional phone line out there so that they, the people have to call a day 24 hours ahead. So they will, we'll have that line out there just strictly for the meal site to phone. Some of the things that we do need to look at, we do need to look at some of the maintenance issues that will be taking place with now having a meal site out there five days a week. It's going to put a little bit more strain on what we have for maintenance out there. We do have to look at some tables and chairs to replace those, and we do have to have somebody come in, electrician come in, and look at some of our work in our kitchen. And that's mostly just for the steam table that will be coming in that West Central Industries is providing. We just have to make sure that we have the right voltage in the kitchen for that. Those are probably the main ones that we have. There's some, of course, there's always, you know, the wish list and all those other little things on there, but those would probably be our main items right now.
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jim, can you pull your mic down?
Sure. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. LeAnn, could you talk about what time things will start out there and when they'll conclude, and some of the issues around that? Also, the custodial services that we're going to need, and the fact that maybe West Central Industries might be available to perform some of those duties?
Right now, the meal site itself, the site manager, Arlene, she would be coming in at 8:15 in the morning, getting all the paperwork done. And her volunteers would be coming in to the building around 9 o'clock, 9:30. They would start setting up. West Central Industries will drop the food off at 10:15, and the meal is served at 11:30. And they've told us by 12:30, everything would be taken care of, picked up, and cleaned up, so that wouldn't affect any of our rentals that are already taking place. I do have like the noon lions and the noon Kiwanis, the retired teachers, and then some Lutheran Social Services training and seminars that take place over the noon hour, too. So we're trying to do as little moving and shuffling with all the other rental groups that are out there right now. In regards to some of the maintenance issues, we don't have a strictly maintenance person out there. So West Central Industries was out on Friday and took a look at the building and the needs for cleaning, helping us keep up on the cleaning out there. And they did propose a bid to Steve this morning, I believe it was, to help with some of those maintenance issues. We are responsible for setting up and taking down the tables and, of course, keeping the building clean. Their volunteers for the site, they are just set for cleaning the, or setting up the tables, putting table placemats, I believe, and getting the tables ready, and then cleaning the dishes afterwards. And they will be using our dishes. They won't be using our trays, but they'll be using our cups and our silverware.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think this is a very worthwhile endeavor, and would hope that the council will approve this. There's a potential for increased membership that could occur because of this, but I just think it's a natural fit because it is a senior center. Most of the folks that eat, I think, are seniors, are they not? And it's a great place for them to go and to socialize. One of the things that Lynn Peterson from Lutheran Social Services mentioned at this February 7th meeting was the need for seniors to get out of their homes and to socialize with people and to eat nutritious meals once in a while. So I think it's very worthwhile, and it, I think, fits the mission of the senior center very much. There are some other folks, Mr. Mayor, and if you would care to call on them from the senior, and also from West Central Industries that are here.
Okay. Before I do that, does our city administrator have any comments here yet about this, or not?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm aware of the proposal that West Central Industries submitted for the custodial services. We've had a number of conversations about what would need to be done at the senior center in order to accommodate the noon dining program. And I think that we have a pretty good understanding, but not necessarily a plan, a permanent plan in place. I think that the senior dining should be at the senior center, and I would certainly hope that the council would see fit to allow that to happen. We can handle the custodial services and needs on a short-term basis using existing staff. And then we'll just need to, in the next few weeks, refine the list of needs out there and develop a plan to address them, including some longer range, more permanent provisions for custodial services. I don't know that, although the proposal from West Central Industries is attractive, we would like to maybe consider some other alternatives as well, and then report back to the council at a later date.
Councilmember Reese?
I think I missed that last part. You, what did you say? Consider other locations?
No. If I did, I didn't mean to. Other options to the custodial.
Oh, to the custodial services? Because that was what I was going to ask you. Are you telling me that we have to put on additional custodial staff?
That's one of the options that we'd have to look at. I think that, you know, we're at a point even before the discussion started about moving the noon meal program to the site that our custodial staff is stretched pretty thin. They're having to cover the senior center, the city office building, the auditorium, and the public works garage. And something has to give. We can, on a short-term basis, eliminate maybe one of those responsibilities, but for the long term, we're going to have to find some help for that staff. And having a part-time or another full-time maintenance person may very well be a solution, but we haven't gotten through that up to this point.
Okay, but is it a single action that's needed from the council, and that's the agreement to the Lutheran Social Services site use agreement?
That's all that's required tonight, yes.
Okay.
And then we will try to figure out how to deal with all of the issues that LeAnn mentioned that need to be addressed.
Steve Brizendeen is here. Steve is LeAnn's supervisor. Steve, is there anything you want to comment on here? Anything?
No, I think Mr. Schmidt covered it. We've got some options on the table for custodial services. That is our biggest need at that facility at this point. Obviously, bringing the site to that facility makes the most sense for this community, and at least from our perspective. And I think in doing so, you're going to hopefully create some more usages and the more people utilizing that facility. And with that comes other issues that we'll have to address as this becomes, hopefully, a more popular site, and the meal site grows from the current numbers that they're serving at the VFW. So I think we've addressed the issues. We know what's out there, and we know that the potential growth that this program could create within our existing usage will create some other things that we'll have to address in the future as well.
Steve, I got a couple of short questions. One is, what's the schedule for the cat bus stopping at the senior citizen center?
Actually, I am on the cat operation board, and we've already been discussing the possibility of adding another route that just would pick up seniors at the different senior locations, like Independence Place, Sunrise Village, and Westview, some of those, and make sure that they get out there for the meal and then pick up and back afterwards.
And the bus stops there every hour, on the hour?
Out at the senior center?
Yes.
No, right now, the bus only is out there at 3:30 on Wednesdays and Fridays, unless there's a big call, because they do do calls. Those are probably the two busiest days where the senior club meets out there, and so some of their ridership comes out there on those two days. But we are looking at adding another route that would just specifically be for the meal site, and that route would go to the senior locations and pick these seniors up to make sure if they wanted a meal to get them out to the senior center and then come back.
And either one of you could answer this. Did you, clarify this for me. If the congregate dining were to come to the senior citizen center, does that cancel other services or programs or groups that are out there? Or do you just move them around within the same timeframe, or like you mentioned, the Lions Club, the Kiwanis Club?
Nope. One of the things that Lutheran Social Services and West Central Industries really stressed is they did not want me to move any of my rental groups that are there already. So we are keeping them there at the site at the same time. I've been keeping them updated on what's going on. We'll just be moving and shifting around a little bit on the days, especially the heavy-loaded days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays and Fridays. And there, which is really is helpful, is by them serving at 11:30 when the noon lions and noon Kiwanis and the retired teachers come in, they eat first, and then they have their programs. So we will be fine with the program. Their program part will be starting when they are done and everything is cleaned up for the meal site.
Okay. Thank you. We have Charlie Oakes in the audience. Charlie is the CEO at West Central Industries. Charlie, do you want to make any comments about this?
Go ahead and count to the line.
Please. Yeah, we have to do that because we're on tape. And how, you know, how does West Central Industries fit into this whole proposal?
Well, as Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as you remember, we expanded our kitchen last year as part of our Meals on Wheels program. And when Lutheran Social Services took over the congregate dining for this part of the state, they asked us if we could be the central kitchen and cater the meals to, not only to Willmar, but to Raymond Pennock, New London Spicer, and so on. And so that's where we came into play. And basically, it's, since the 1st of January, it's been, it's been a real interesting time as providers have changed for congregate dining for the whole southern half of the state of Minnesota. And then on top of that, and I apologize for that, on top of that, the VFW, who has been a wonderful host for many years for the program, felt that they needed to make a change in their operation and their method of doing business, and they were no longer able to do, provide the site for the senior dining. As of effective March 1st, they have remodeling and renovation plans. So, and was just reinforced to us today, that they can't even wait till the following Monday, that they actually want us to switch on that Thursday of the 1st. So that sort of put all this on a fast track, and unfortunately, I think that's, that hasn't maybe given us enough time to really reach out to everybody that we should have reached out to. But we have met with the senior group, and we have met with community ed, and we have done the best look we could around the community. And it seems to me that you have, you know, you basically have, the major issue tonight is, are you willing to let Lutheran Social Services and WCI begin catering the meals out at the senior dining, at the senior center, March 1st? And then the details about what additional needs they need for custodial work or maintenance stuff, we'll have to figure that out once we hit the ground. And we're certainly willing to help with that if the city decides they want to use us. We're willing to work with the city's custodial staff if they need it. I know that one of the issues is it's moving chairs. Because of moving either the dining site or moving one of the service clubs, there's going to be some chairs set up and take down. And this has been a concern that's been voiced at every single conversation we've had along the way. And so somehow, we're going to have to fill that gap. But I think that if we all, if we all work together, you know, you know how to find us. If there's problems, we'll try to work them out. And we, we're just hoping that the city will see that this is a good way to keep a very important program going. And frankly, other than that, I don't have any other alternatives for it.
Thanks, Charlie. Councilmembers, do you have any other questions or comments here? Mr. Reese?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would move to enter into this site use agreement for the Lutheran Social Services for the nutrition program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead with this plan and enter into an agreement with Lutheran Social Services on this site plan. And that is to use the Willmar Senior Citizen Center as the next congregate dining site. And again, to be clear about this, it means that the, that dining area will be used from 9 o'clock or 8:30 in the morning until about 2:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. That's for setup, service, and cleanup. And I think we're getting somewhere in the range of about 100 people, 90 people, at the site.
Fifty, I think, Mr. Mayor.
Charlie would have the numbers in his head, I'm sure.
The numbers, the numbers the last few years have been declining. Right now, on, it's not unusual for the numbers to be as low as 50, or it, and on days when there are special events, it's not unusual for the numbers to climb as high as 100. For some reason, Mondays seem to be a low day. And although the agreement with Lutheran Social Services, I believe, does literally say 2 o'clock, our plans are to turn everything back to LeAnn and the senior center by 12:30 each day. Our senior coordinator, senior dining coordinator, she might be there answering the phone to line up reservations for tomorrow, but the vast majority of the kitchen and the building will all be back in the hands of the senior people.
Okay. Good.
We hope the numbers will go back up to 100-plus. But that depends on, and I think it's a more attractive location, and I think it, with good food and friendly service, I think they will go back up. But right now, they're bouncing around 50, 60, sometimes 100.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmembers, any other comments or questions here? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone for basically answering all of my questions, and I was especially pleased to hear that the cat board is looking at a route for picking up folks for senior dining. I've got at least one person in my ward that has been walking, basically, almost every day to the VFW. And I know this person was not happy about having to try to walk a little extra, and I want to encourage the cat board to make this happen.
Charlie?
Ma'am, I know that the cat service has been servicing the VFW somewhat, and so they'll be aware of the change, and hopefully, we'll get that figured out, too. And I also believe the city has been helping with salting and snow plowing at the VFW because it has been the senior dining site. So although that's not an exact trade-off for custodial help, there may be a little bit of savings there.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else here? We have a motion, and it's been seconded. You ready to vote? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Good luck, Charlie and your staff, and LeAnn and Steve, thank you for your coordination of all this. Thank you very much. Let's see. Councilmember Dacken, you wanted to pull the hospital board minutes?
Yes.
Of February 14th. Did somebody want something here?
Yeah, we, well, we didn't even approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we went right into that.
Consent items. We didn't, we never made a motion on that.
All right.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the senior council minutes, and at this point.
We have a motion and a second, just no vote on that.
Did we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right, those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Now we'll go back and talk about a couple of these. Councilmember Dacken?
Well, we should probably have a motion now on the senior, senior council minutes, Mr. Mayor, so I would move to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the senior council minutes of February 2nd. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Massa, the CEO from Rice Hospitals here, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to ask him to talk just briefly on the physician recruitment, the Rice Regional Dental Clinic, and maybe the Healing Garden projects. And anything else he may want to bring us up to speed on?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Lori Massa. I'm the CEO at Rice Memorial Hospital. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before the council tonight. You've been reading about Rice Hospital, both in terms of communications that we have had with you, as well as what's been, what's been in the media. We are experiencing some financial issues, some of which were anticipated as a result of the building project, but we've seen lower patient volumes, which has really exacerbated the financial situation. As you know, we implemented and announced a plan to reduce expenditures by about $2.3 million from our budgeted expenditures this year. That was implemented last week. We're continuing to look at other possible savings. And I just transmitted a letter to Mr. Schmidt today to open the discussion on the intergovernmental transfer that was reported on in the paper. We did discuss that at the hospital board minutes, or at the board meeting. In terms of physician recruiting, and people ask me, why are the, why are the, why are the numbers down at the hospital? Well, there's a lot of reasons for that. But one of the reasons is we've seen some key physician, physician members of our medical staff leave the community in recent years, and we have not been successful in recruiting replacements. And that means when people can't get in to be seen on a regular basis here locally, they seek other providers for their care. And so we are really emphasizing and working hard to try to recruit physicians in key specialties to build the medical staff that will build volumes back to the levels where we were in the past. And we've just affiliated community medical centers, it's the largest clinic in the community, and we work very closely with them, as well as with Family Practice Medical Center. Affiliated is recruiting at least 10 physicians right now. Family Practice is looking for another family doctor. We're assisting in that process. Affiliated has been successful in securing two new physicians who have signed contracts, a new OB-GYN who will be coming in September, and a new family doctor coming in August. We have offered a contract to a new gastroenterologist, which is a very key specialty for both the hospital, the clinic, and the surgery center, and we hope to hear by the end of this weekend whether that individual will be coming to the community. So we're starting to see some success on the recruitment side. We need to get to the point where we're adding five or six new physicians each year for the next few years to rebuild our medical staff to levels that we were at prior to, say, maybe three, four years ago. So that's kind of the longer-range plan. Mr. Dacken asked about the Healing Garden. Mr. Dokken asked about the Healing Garden project. That is the, the last piece of the hospital's building project. The goal was to create a healing environment, not only on the inside of the hospital, but on the outside. And we did have a very nice garden with some walking paths and some seating areas that was designed for the hospital. The Rice Health Foundation has raised practically all of the money to do that. We won't be using very much of the hospital's capital budget for that project at all. Individual contributions ranging from, from a couple hundred dollars to, to twenty thousand dollars for one individual contribution for the garden. We'll be putting all of that together. We did, we did open bids on that project last week and the bids were all under budget and the hospital board will be awarding a contract at its meeting in March. And I've forgotten the third thing, oh, the dental clinic.
The dental clinic.
The, we are also continuing the development of a regional dental, dental clinic, which will be not only a clinic to serve people in west-central Minnesota, but a major training site for the University of Minnesota School of Dentistry. Dentists are in very short supply. The, in, in west-central Minnesota, our ratio of dentists to population is quite, quite a ways below the statewide average. And the average age of dentists in the region is, is getting up there in the fifties and there's a real concern about where the new dentists will come from. And we believe that this program will help, help attract dentists to our community who will have an opportunity to train here for a month at a time during their senior year of dental school, but it also opens up access to people on public assistance programs and other folks who can't get in to see dentists because of the shortage. We've entered into an affiliation agreement with the University of Minnesota. We've raised enough money to cash flow the clinic for the first two years and we're starting to get more and more commitments as more people hear about the clinic for future years' funding. The affiliation agreement is for five years and we believe within the next six months we should have funding lined up to cash flow the clinic for at least that five-year period. So that is moving forward. We've developed a job description. We'll be recruiting the faculty dentist position here within the next few weeks and developing the building, the building plans to build out the clinic. Our hope is to be able to see, see our first dental patients in October of 2007.
And I believe that at the last board meeting, that was mentioned that Cano High County Commissioners support this project.
That is correct.
They see a real benefit on the social services side of the county, is that not correct?
We have had discussions with the, with the county commissioners. Public health is very involved in this, in this, in this project. They're our partners under the federal grant, along with the university, and they will help us identify and, and get people to the clinic for their, for their dental visits as part of their public health outreach responsibilities. We, we have been hearing support from the Cano High County Commissioners and we anticipate having conversations with other county, county boards in the twelve-county area where we expect the patients to come from, for this particular clinic.
Any comments for Mr. Massa? Councilmember Reese?
How about your orthopedic surgeon recruitment?
I wish I had good news for you on that front. We have two candidates at the current time, but nothing, nothing new to report. I think we will know on one of them within the next four to six weeks. It's about that time. He's in a fellowship program in sports medicine and he'll be needing to make a decision here pretty quick. He's told us he's got it down to three communities and we're one of them, but we don't have a final answer. And the other candidate was someone that we just started our discussions with about three weeks ago. So we're very early in that, that stage of discussion, but that is a key specialty area.
Anyone else? Lori, could you just, when you say you're, you're saving or reducing the budget by two-point-six, or two-point-two million dollars, what percentage of the budget is that roughly?
That's about, about three percent, a little bit less than three percent of the budget.
Okay. And then the, the layoff of employees, is that all complete at this point?
I'd, I'd like to say that we're done, but, but I can't make that promise. A lot depends month to month as we, as we continue to look at revenues and expenses going forward. We tried to identify enough savings in this first round that hopefully that will be it, but I can't make that promise.
And those employees are being assisted through the HR department to transition out of the hospital or?
Yes.
Or transfer them on to the best?
We've given them letters of recommendation, we've assisted them with outplacement counseling, we've got an employee assistance program that's active. So there are resources for the employees, but it's still a very, a difficult situation and troubling situation for them.
Yes, it is. All right, thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Lori, I think it's also important to note that there were no clinical staff that were involved in the layoff. These were all support staff, is that correct?
That's correct. The clinical staff will be affected by reduction of hours if the census does not, does not warrant the additional staffing, but as, as far as laying off individuals, we didn't lay off any nursing staff or direct caregivers.
And I think it's important to also point out that what Rice Hospital is experiencing is not unique among hospitals around the state. Is that, is that a fair statement or not?
It's a fair statement that it's spotty across the state, but generally inpatient volumes are down across the state. There was a recent report in the Star Tribune about Alina laying off three-hundred-and-fifty employees at the end of 2006. Fairview Health Systems laid off about three-hundred employees right prior to that. North Memorial in the cities was having some difficulties. So it, it really is kind of a statewide phenomenon right now in terms of lower utilization.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Jim, do you want a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Rice Hospital Board Minutes of February fourteenth. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you, Lori. I had asked to pull the minutes of the utility commission and the reason is that during the utilities commission minutes, a meeting of February twelfth, there is a rate increase that's being proposed across all the users of the utilities. And I wanted to be sure that our citizens are fully aware of this, as soon as I can find where I underlined it here. Electrical rates are going up by five-point-eight percent. Water rates are going up by eight-point-five percent. District heating rates are going up by ten percent in 2007 and ten percent in 2008. So it's important that our citizens are aware of this and that organizations and businesses and churches and schools, you know, plan accordingly for this. You know, that's what's being considered in these minutes. There was a public hearing on this and these are substantial increases in utility rates. And this is effective when? If I could ask a staff person?
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe this has got to be held, a public hearing held by the council on these rates.
The public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
And I believe this item was going to the finance committee, but it got, yes, means that?
So it's not up for approval tonight then?
The meeting was, was held the same day as the finance committee and I believe it's on a future finance committee agenda.
All right, so the public hearing hasn't happened with the council?
Both the municipal utilities, Mr. Mayor, and the city council hold public hearings on the rate increases. So these recommendations following the municipal utilities hearings will go to the finance committee and the council will set a hearing likely for March nineteenth.
March nineteenth is a public hearing. Okay, here it says the proposed adjustments will be approved as presented. That's not?
Well, that's to the commission.
That would, that would be for the municipal utilities commission.
Okay.
And their public hearing.
It also says it has to come to us in ordinance.
All right. So March nineteenth will be the public hearing on that. But those are, those are the proposed increases in utility rates.
All right, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Those rates are what it proposed and it has been several years since the heating rates were changed and the water rates and like three or four years since the electrical rates have been adjusted and.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the utilities commission minutes of February twelfth. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Finally, I'd like to thank Mr. David Hertzler, who has agreed to serve on the hospital, or on the library board. David is retired from banking and construction industry. He, he and some partners started a bank and sold it in the Milwaukee area. And he also served as the director of the foundation for First Bank in the Twin Cities for about four years, four or five years. So he has a, a good background in financial experiences and Army veteran, member of the First Presbyterian Church here in Wilmer. And thank you to David for his willingness to serve on the library board. All right, now we will go to the public hearings. The first one is an ordinance, to consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars in general obligation improvement bonds. And the public hearing is now open and I'll call on our city administrator to explain this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You have two actions to consider tonight and as the mayor pointed out, this three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollar general obligation improvement bond is to complete the work in the Waterview Business Park. The two actions are, and, and we're currently in the midst of the ordinance hearing, so once the mayor closes the hearing, you should adopt the ordinance and then follow that with a resolution providing for the competitive sale of the three-point-two million dollar bond issue and that would take place at our March nineteenth city council meeting.
All right, thank you, Mick. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments about this ordinance for a new issue, issuance of improvement bonds? If not, the public hearing is closed and the matter comes up to the city council members. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance of three-point-two-eight-five million dollars in general obligation bond series 2007A.
Second. We have a motion and a second to introduce an ordinance authorizing the issuance of three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars general obligation improvement bonds series 2007A and the levying of taxes to secure payment of this. Further discussion about this. Roll call.
It's a matter of clarification, Mr. Mayor. It's to adopt the ordinance.
To adopt the ordinance, thank you. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Bleak?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The ordinance is adopted. Next is a public hearing for the 2007 improvements hearing.
Mr. Mayor, you need another motion for the competitive sale, which I will move.
Second.
Mick explained that there was two things that we had to do. Number one was adopt the ordinance, number two was to put up the, the bonds for competitive sale on March nineteenth.
You make that motion?
Yes, sir.
And it's been seconded?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second to put this bond issuance up for competitive bids. Further discussion. Kevin, is that a roll call or simple motion? Roll call?
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Bleak?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Now the second public hearing is open and this is for the improvements hearing for 2007. Mel Odens is our city engineer and I'll ask him to explain what this is about.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. I will come up in front of the audience to explain the project. Before we start, there was a handout, there are some in the back and there's still some up here. Does anybody need a handout? We will be going through the handout tonight for the hearing. Just quickly before we go through, there's a position statement, then there's a, a regular agenda, and then in the back, there's a description of all the projects, which I'll be going through in a little more detail. And then also on the back sheet is a map. So as we go through the project, you can kind of follow, I realize the map is kind of small, but kind of where some of the streets are. Starting with the position statement, it is the position of the City of Wilmer to seek input of all interested citizens and/or affected members of the public in its decision-making process. Hence, that's why we start with the improvement hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to review and explain the improvements, estimated cost, and to obtain input from interested parties. The process on the third page that we'll be going through is, I'll explain the benefits on number two and then under the part number three, public comment, the mayor will go through each street, write down the list, and if you could wait till you have a comment on any particular street, you can come up when he calls on that street. There's two kind of summary pages of all the streets that are proposed this year. The one doesn't have a description, but if you go to the next page, it's the same description that was handed out, I believe, in your notice letter. But I will briefly go through each one. This year, the total project is a little over three miles, three-point-two miles of reconstruction overlay and new construction. And the total estimate for all the work for this improvement is four-point-one million dollars. This is the first year in eleven years that we have not had any new residential development. This is only new commercial and reconstruction and overlay and maintenance. The reconstruction is the four streets that you see there, starting with Seventeenth Avenue Southwest. It's, it's a cul-de-sac off of Sixth Street. It was built in nineteen sixty-five, it had a rating of thirty. It's about a hundred-and-fifty-foot-long cul-de-sac. We're gonna maintain the thirty-eight-foot width, this cul-de-sac, as well as Sixth Street down below it. We're gonna replace the water main. If you recall, last year, we had water main replacement on Fifth Street along the Heidelberg Catacism, or Catacism, the Heidelberg Apartments and the dentist office. That water main loops up to this cul-de-sac and then loops back down to Fifth Street. There is no water main actually in the Seventeenth Avenue cul-de-sac. They get their water service from water main that actually comes in from the back and then goes back down to the Beadmore Church. So what we're gonna be doing is adding water main in this cul-de-sac and tying it onto the Sixth Street water. And if you go to the next one, Sixth Street, from Seventeenth Avenue to Nineteenth Avenue, is also gonna replace the water main. It's a current six-inch water main that was put in in the mid-sixties. This is about a seven-hundred-foot length of street. It's in poor condition and will maintain the forty-foot width. So basically on those two sections, the width that you have now is the width that it'll be built to and it'll, it'll replace the street and the water main. Tenth Street Northeast, from High Avenue to Business Seventy-One, this is the last link in that area. High Avenue, Lakeland Drive is pretty decent. Business Seventy-One's been overlaid for reconstruct. It's got a very poor rating, it's about a five-hundred-and-eighty-foot section of street. It was built in nineteen eighty-two, but the section that they built it to was, was not adequate, which is very consistent with what was done in the late seventies and early eighties. The next one is Third Street Southeast. This one was proposed back in 2002. It also is, it's a twenty-one-hundred-foot length of street that was built, actually three separate sections. There was one piece built in nineteen forty-one, one piece built in nineteen forty-eight, and one piece built in nineteen sixty-two. We're doing a total reconstruction. If you recall, the issue a few years back was, there was really four issues, is the width. At that time, we had proposed widening it to thirty-two feet. The narrowing of the boulevard was an issue. Tree removal was an issue, and then the cost. And I think we've addressed those issues. We're gonna leave the south section of the street, or the south block, if you will, from Eleventh Avenue to Alina Avenue as a forty-two-foot section, and then from there north will be a thirty-foot section. So that does save some trees, it does reduce the cost, and it leaves the boulevard basically the same width as the boulevard is now. boulevard is now. The next three are the mill and overlay. 19th Avenue Southeast, from First to Fifth Street, and then the section from Ninth Street to where it wraps around over to Lakeland Drive. This was built in 1991. It's about a 4,000-foot section. With that, it's going to be milling the outside 3-inch, or 10 feet, but we're going to be milling down 3 inches, and then we'll overlay the whole section of road with 3 inches versus the usual inch and a half. The next one is Country Club Drive. It's just short of a mile. This is built in 1987 through 1989. We are going to replace some damaged areas. We've got about four areas out there that we're going to be subcutting out and repairing, similar to patching before we overlay the whole street to keep the integrity of the Turning the page is the new construction. The first one is the Fifth Street, commonly referred to as the Mall Road. It's the road that we're proposing that would connect the south into Fifth Street by Cashwise to 19th Avenue. If you, they cut across traffic across the mall, if you will. That's the road that we would, in essence, build a regular Fifth Street that would connect up to 19th Avenue. And this is the same street that then would go south down to Home Depot, which was the first project that we had an improvement on, which we just sold the bonds for five minutes ago, the $3.1 million job. So the next one is Wilmer Avenue Southwest from Highway 40 to the new county road across the airport. County Road 5, or it's actually extension to County Road 47, is going to go straight across the airport on the section line. And we would reconstruct, or actually add new extension of Wilmer Avenue up to the new county road that goes across the airport. And then the last one is the county road across the airport. We're putting in 12-inch water main for a mile. And then if you go down below that, it's the street lighting, which corresponds to the new construction. So it'd be the Fifth Street again, the Wilmer Avenue piece, as well as the county road across the airport. And down below it is miscellaneous work. With the movement of the airport, we've got some airport demolition and runway reclamation work we need to do. We are going to be looking at two walk paths, one on North Business 71. On the east side, it's going to be in the, kind of the grass area of the old Regional Treatment Center project, or the Midwest Technology Project property. And then Fifth Street Southeast, across the back of the mall, connect the walk path from there down to 19th Avenue and extend it on down to Home Depot as well. And then the last, the last one is maintenance work, crack sealing, seal coat, and then also just some taxi lane widening at the new airport. So that completes the explanation. I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and then you can go down the list.
Thank you, Mel. What we'll do is, we'll do this section by section, and if you want to ask some questions or make some comments, would you please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and give your address, and then make your comment. The first section then will be the reconstruction projects. And the first one is 17th Avenue Southwest, the cul-de-sac east of Sixth Street Southwest. Anybody want to comment about that? All right, the next one then is Sixth Street Southwest, 17th Avenue Southwest, and 19th Avenue. Any comments about that? Next is the 10th Street Northeast, High Avenue to Business, Trunk Highway 71. Any comments about that? And then the fourth one is Third Street Southeast, 11th Avenue Southeast to Minnesota Avenue Southeast. Any comments about that or questions? All right. Next then would be the mill and overlay. Mel, do we need to go through those piece by piece?
Yes, yes, we do.
All right. 19th Avenue Southeast, First Street Southeast to Fifth Street Southeast. Good evening.
Good evening. Keith Patterson representing Candy Entertainment Center. Just some questions that have come up. I addressed Mel on a couple of these, partially in regards to timing, as everybody's familiar, as I've been here before, in regards to the 19th Avenue projects in front of the Entertainment Center, and access to the business as far as the timing of this, and also the need for this. That section of road was just redone in 91, and it's not in bad shape at all. And I was just wondering why it was coming up to remill that section, you know, for that. And basically, the timing issues to ensure that we have access on 19th Avenue, you know, with the construction coming up, closing off 19th Avenue, and, you know, is this going to be another closed road time, you know, or is it going to be done concurrently, or how the plans are for that?
All right, Keith, just hold on there. Mel, do you want to address those two questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And yes, we have talked in the, over, often on, he'll stop in. As far as the access goes, our intent right now is to provide temporary access off of 19th Avenue while they're constructing the middle piece, the Fifth to Ninth Street piece, which is, the completion date of that is July 1st. Okay? And the schedule for this project, our intended award would be toward the middle of, toward end of June. And so what we're looking at is probably not be able to start this project until that one's complete. And so there will be disruption for the majority of the summer. However, with the completion date of the other project, you should be able to come in from the backside, because 24th Avenue will be complete down by Arby's and Target, and you'll be able to go north up to 19th Avenue through the Waterview Business Park on Fifth Street and access the Candy Entertainment Center from that direction.
And the second question is, is it necessary?
Well, there's really, there's really a few things that are, that are driving this project. One of them is, is we need to widen a few feet to the south to match the section that we're, to match the 60-foot section. There's a, there's a short piece in there that's not a full 60 feet wide for five lanes. It is 16 years old, so within the next five years, we would be overlaying it. It would be, it would be on the list for being overlaid. And then the last one is, is the loops, the signal loops are at their useful life. We've been having some trouble with them, and we need to replace them. And so those three factors tie together, and since we have 19th Avenue, all the work in that area being done, we wanted to complete it all at one, all in one construction season.
All right. Keith, anything else?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Keith. Anyone else on that project? 19th Avenue, Ninth Street Southeast to Lakeland Drive Southeast. Any comments? Please come up. Can you give your name and address, please?
Robert Morrow, and I'm at 1,419th Avenue Southeast. And I was wondering, well, when Walmart opens up, even now, there's a lot of traffic on that road. If there would be any way to put a, run like 24th or 28th Street out to the bypass and have some of them, businesses down there just come directly off of there instead of coming down 19th Street? And about what it would take to have that speed limit reduced on 19th Avenue, because there's a lot of, over by them apartments, and then I got some neighbors, and there's a lot of little kids running around, you know, in that area too. So that's what, that was just wondering about.
What's the speed limit there now, 30?
I think it's 40.
40.
40?
Yep.
Is it, is it curb along the street?
Yeah.
Okay. Mel, anything you want to comment there?
On the, on the speed issue, that's a process that you have to petition the state to do a speed study, and then they review the traffic. And so that's for consistency throughout the state. On the access issue or connection to the Waterview Business Park, I think is maybe the bigger issue here. And I just would like to remind the council that in the transportation plan that we adopted in 2003, it actually does address taking Lakeland Drive straight south down to 24th Avenue. So the future plan for the city is to take Lakeland, which would be straight south and southeasterly, and connect it with 24th Avenue, and that should relieve some of the traffic. However, we can't get it all done in one year.
Were you aware of that, Robert, that Lakeland might be, or will be extended?
No.
Okay. Do you understand what he's explaining there?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So it's coming in the future. It won't be this year, but...
Okay.
He'll actually, I think Lakeland will actually parallel the bypass, right?
Correct.
All the way down to 24th, and then swing to the east.
All right.
Or swing to the west. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else on that project? Next one is Country Club Drive Northeast, 26th Avenue Northeast to the cul-de-sac. Any comments, please?
My name is Todd Earnholz. I live at 2,400 Country Club Drive. And right in front of our house, we've had a bird bath. That's about 40 feet long, and on a day like today with the thaw and the sump pumps, it's always there. And you cited four areas that were going to be dealt with on that road, and I'm just wondering if that's one of them, or if it could be one of them.
I can tell you in a second.
Has that been sinking, too?
Yeah, they filled it in last year. Last summer, they put a little patch in, and it got a little better, but today it's, the boys like it.
We, I'm just, we don't actually show the one in the 2,400. We have one just south of you. We're at, just right in front of your driveway, or?
It'd be south of our driveway.
Okay.
So between 2,400 and 2,308.
Okay. We, just for the, for the record, if it's a bird bath, and it's not, the structure of the road isn't really poor, we will correct the slope of the road to get rid of the bird baths, or our best effort to get rid of the bird bath. The areas that we're going to subcut out are areas where it's been a bird bath for 15 years, and it's just ruined the subgrade, if you will. We'll take a look at that one, though, to see if we can't, see if we need to do anything more than what we're doing.
Yeah, we've been there six years, and I would say it's been the whole time we've been there, so...
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Todd. Any other comments on Country Club Drive? All right. Next then is the new construction area, Fifth Street Southeast, 600 feet south of Wilmer Avenue to 19th Avenue Southeast. That's the street behind the mall. Any comments about that? Mel, I've got a question. When that, if this gets put in, or when it's put in, is that going to have curb on it?
That, yes, it would. The section would be a 54-foot section, would be a northbound lane, turn lane, and two southbound lanes with shoulder on the east side, curbing gutter, and a walk path on the east side of the road.
People have to stay in the street. They can't be zipping through the parking lot, then.
That's correct. And it would have a boulevard. So you would have access, you can't just drive over the grass onto the street. I mean, you would have, it would be a curb boulevard all the way around.
Mm-hmm. Any comments about that? Actually, that's been pretty enjoyable to a lot of drivers back there, I think. Zip in all directions back there, so it's going to change some patterns of driving, for sure. All right. Wilmer Avenue Southwest, Trunk Highway 40 to County Road 47. Any comments about that? All right. County Road 47, Trunk Highway 40 to US Highway 12. Any comments? Keith?
Just a, a quick comment, or just a question. I don't see any access into the business district there. Is that planned, not to have any access into your industrial park there off of 47?
There's going to be an access every quarter-mile. There'll be, there'll be actually three. There'll be one, one at Trot, and then there's going to be one halfway between Trot and Highway 40, and then one halfway between Highway, or US Highway 12 and Trot Avenue.
So you can see the streets in the industrial park will have access.
Correct.
All right. Then, street lighting. Any comments about that? Fifth Street Southeast, County Road 47, Wilmer Avenue Southwest? All right. And then under miscellaneous, any questions about the airport demolition and runway reclamation? Basically, we're trying to get the old airport up and running for an expanded industrial park. So you'll be seeing it developed in phases, streets crisscrossing the old airport, concrete being ripped up and torn out. Any questions about the walk paths? North Highway 71, Fifth Street Southeast, any questions about that? And then crack sealing and seal coating, and airport taxi lane widening. Anything about that? All right. Thank you for, yes, come on up, please.
The first one here, I'm Vern Stotter from the 17th Avenue Southwest cul-de-sac.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Vern Stotter.
Okay, Vern, thank you.
17th Avenue Southwest.
Thank you.
And referring to water main, he said there's, the water main comes from the backside of our property. Are we going to have to pay for putting new water main in from the cul-de-sac into our house? No?
No. In 2003, when the utility fee was implemented, the purpose of the fee was to eliminate any assessments for water and sewer, and it's been a great tool, because we can do work like this, get the water main in at no cost to the homeowner. We will replace, add water main, and hook up all services to your house. And there is not an assessment for that.
Okay. Do we have any idea at this time what it might cost for the cul-de-sac?
The cost, the, just rough planning numbers are going to be between $53 and $55 a running foot in the cul-de-sac area. We, sometimes those are by unit. If the front footage is not consistent, we would probably go with the unit cost to be consistent within the cul-de-sac itself, or a neighborhood average.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Any other questions or comments from the audience? All right. Now, I will then close the public hearing on this. There's no more questions. All right, now it comes up to the city council members. Councilmember Reese?
I just have one question. At the Wilmer Avenue change, is Wilmer Avenue going to stay the way it is? And if 40 is turned back, how are you going to bring that around? Are you going to follow around on 40 and come back? And is that, is that the plan?
The plan initially for this year would be to tee Wilmer Avenue in, would be north to where it tees into 40 right now, and... of where it tees into 40 right now, and leave the configuration of Wilmer Avenue and 40 like it is this year. The ultimate plan would be to take across and be square of the railroad tracks and come out at 22nd Street Southwest.
So you'd turn it before the railroad tracks?
That's correct.
Coming from the east?
Right, at 22nd, you would start turning northwesterly.
That was my question. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under miscellaneous, I want to talk about the airport taxi lane widening. About how long is that going to take and how are we going to actually do that? Are we going to put it all on one side? Are we going to split it and put some on each side, or?
Mr. Councilman Dawkins, we did part of it last year, and we did it on one side. So the intent this year would be to, if funding prevails, you know, we would do it on the other side.
Okay.
So if you go out there and look, we have done widening on one side.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mel, I was asked by a gentleman on southeast Third Street, the south part that you have that says the nursing home and Calvary Church. Now, they're surrounded by four sides of a street. How would they be assessed? I know it's not the assessment hearing, but do they go by the address side, or?
Councilmember Fagerly? Members of the council, that is not a residential property, so the policy for those businesses is to assess them on all sides during construction. And normally, they're spread out a little more than we're having them this year, and I'm sure that's your question, because they were hit on Alina last year. But following current policy, unless there's a change, I will be assessing approximately 330 feet for both establishments at the reconstruction phase.
Okay, and that, hopefully, it'll be in that 53 to 55, if not less.
Correct.
Okay, and then one other question. On 19th Avenue to Lakeland Drive, when do you plan on doing that project for the overlay?
We're still working on the timing on that, but it would be our, right now, it looks like it's going to be after the middle piece is complete.
Okay, when is Walmart planning on opening?
The last word we have is they wanted the street completed by July 1st so that, you know, they didn't come right out and say it. I don't think that they would open shortly thereafter, but one would assume.
So all of their parking lot and cement work and stuff will be done on site before we do the overlay on 19th Avenue?
It, yeah, I would, I would say it would be...
Hate to have the project done.
And then?
And then all busted up.
Correct.
So, okay, thank you.
Are you sure about that, Mel?
You know, I'm not privy to their schedule, but that was their intent.
Okay, I think that's a really important message, that, you know, we don't want all that heavy equipment piling onto a newly overlaid street, so...
Because that's the route they'll be taking, Lakeland Drive.
Sure.
Councilmembers? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mel, just a brief question, and in regards to Keith's concerns for access. I know that we had this come up on a different project, I believe it was last year. But I think I heard you say that some of his access is going to have to be off of 24th and then, and then up. Is he going to be allowed any type of signage that's going to direct folks up into that area?
We've, yes, we're looking at doing some construction signage in that area, similar to what we did when we had 19th Avenue closed, or at, last year, when they were doing the interchange.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mel, on 19th Avenue from First to Fifth Street in front of the KEC, how long is it going to take to do the mill and overlay? What are we looking at for timing there?
Not a, not a real long time in terms of, normally, what would happen is they will come and mill it off, clean it up, open it up to traffic, because the mill, as it's passing through this area of the state, and then, once they can get it in the schedule to pave it closed again, they would, that only takes maybe two days.
Okay, so it's very short.
It's a short duration. We're not talking large closures. But there will be some inconvenience, and then it'll be closed down for striping. But, but the south edge will be closed down because we have to do a little bit of widening on the south side.
Right.
Within the boulevard.
The Fifth Street on the east of the mall there, then, did I understand you're right to say there will be a boulevard on the west side? The entire way?
Along the mall?
Yes.
Correct.
Will there be exits coming off of that?
Yes.
I mean, three, four of them, then?
Yes, there's one on the south edge, one just on the south edge of Penny's, one on the north edge of Penny's, and one at the common line of Cashwise and Herberger's.
Okay, so then they, they won't be able to zip in and out of there because of the boulevard?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Reese?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce a resolution ordering the improvements and directing the preparation of both plans and specifications for this project.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead with this plan and order a specification. Further comment about this resolution? All right, Kevin, roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. I'd like to thank our citizens who came out tonight and participated in this public hearing and asked your questions and made your comments. That enhances and enlarges the planning and discussion, so thank you for your time tonight. Next is the third public hearing, which has to do with some tax forfeited property. And I will open that public hearing and call on Mr. Halliday to explain what this is all about.
Mayor Heitke, members of the council. On or about November 30th, 2006, the county held a tax forfeiture sale. Four properties in the city of Wilmer were sold. One of those properties had unpaid special assessments against them for street work in 2001 Street and Other Improvement Project. That parcel located at 712 Third Street Southwest had the original amount of, I believe it's thirty-eight hundred, $3,484.50 against it, at a 6% rate. It is the city's policy to hold a hearing, notify the new owner, and to reassess those special assessments at the rate that was in the bond sale of that project. So it is, at this point, staff's recommendation to take testimony if the individual is here, and then to adopt an assessment rule for those unpaid special assessments at 6% and to spread it over ten years, as if it would be paid like any other project. The assess, the assessable years are going to be delayed because the sale was after November 1 of last year, so the first year of collection is 2008, so interest is a little longer, but...
All right, thank you, Kevin. Is the owner of the property or their representative here tonight to speak about this? If not, what?
Close the hearing.
Does anybody else have any comments about this or questions? If not, the public hearing is closed. Now the council will deal with the issue.
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce the resolution adopting this assessment rule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this assessment for this tax forfeited property. Further comment about this? Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. It's a chance for people to address the council and ask, make a statement if they wish to do that. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to number nine on the agenda, which is the city's Finance Committee report for February 12th. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda had to do with a reapportionment, some Civic Center capital monies. We reviewed a request to reappropriate $15,000 from the locker exhaust project to cover the additional cost of purchasing a new Zamboni. It was explained to us that the Civic Center exhaust was still in working order and that the city would forego adding any upgrades at this time. The remaining $5,000 that would be in that account would then be used to buy individual exhaust fans for the dressing rooms in the Blue Line Center. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to reappropriate $15,000 for the purchase of the new Zamboni.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappropriate $15,000 from the locker exhaust project to cover the additional cost of purchasing the ice machine, the Zamboni. Further comment about this? Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was the 2007A bond recommendation. Staff explained to us that the 2007A bond recommendations to help finance the Waterview Business Park Improvement Project, and this we've talked about already and have acted on, so that was for information only. Our third item had to do with library funding. Staff presented their recommendations as to how to fund the additional $17,000 that the council had approved giving to the library at our February 5 meeting. The proposal was to fund those monies out of interest earnings from the library capital reserve account. The credit reserve account was established in January of 2003 with $316,000 of excess local option sales tax revenues. The account has earned a little over $39,000 in interest and has spent about $88,000 in capital purchases in the four years that, since its inception. Following some discussion, it was a recommendation of the committee, and I will introduce a resolution to appropriate $17,000 of interest earnings from the library capital reserve account to the Wilmer Public Library to cover 2007 operating requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appropriate $17,000 of interest earnings from the library capital reserve account to the Wilmer Public Library to cover 2007 operating requests. Comment about that? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief question for Mick, if I could. I think I understood this correctly. This is the only reserve account of its type where the interest earnings go back into the account and not the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was trying to, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to think through our enterprise funds. I think from the general fund, it is the library. So assures me, Mr. Halliday.
All right. Any other comments here? Mick, if we do it this way, does this affect the annual, what is it called?
Maintenance of effort.
Maintenance of effort level?
Yes, sir, it does.
All right, so next year, then, we have a base of at least $315,000?
Yes, that's right, 315.
At least, okay. Any, anyone else? Roll, or Councilmember DeBlick?
Just a question, Mick or Kevin, what does that, leave that balance fund at after this action?
I don't have those numbers with me, but I believe it was in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars, 250,000. I'm not sure what the exact number is.
Can tell you real quick? $250,000, right on the nose. Okay? Anything else? Roll call?
Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was the 2007A bond recommendation. Staff explained to us that the 2007A bond recommendations to help finance the Waterview Business Park Improvement Project, and this we've talked about already and have acted on, so that was for information only. Our third item had to do with library funding. Staff presented their recommendations as to how to fund the additional $17,000 that the council had approved giving to the library at our February 5 meeting. The proposal was to fund those monies out of interest earnings from the library capital reserve account. The credit reserve account was established in January of 2003 with $316,000 of excess local option sales tax revenues. The account has earned a little over $39,000 in interest and has spent about $88,000 in capital purchases in the four years that, since its inception. Following some discussion, it was a recommendation of the committee, and I will introduce a resolution to appropriate $17,000 of interest earnings from the library capital reserve account to the Wilmer Public Library to cover 2007 operating requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appropriate $17,000 of interest earnings from the library capital reserve account to the Wilmer Public Library to cover 2007 operating requests. Comment about that? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief question for Mick, if I could. I think I understood this correctly. This is the only reserve account of its type where the interest earnings go back into the account and not the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was trying to, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to think through our enterprise funds. I think from the general fund, it is the library. So assures me, Mr. Halliday.
All right. Any other comments here?
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to contract, for this project, Chester Contracting Incorporated for a total contract amount of, what did you say, is it?
$935,500.
$935,500. Mr. Engen is in the audience here tonight. Richard, would you like to make some comments about this project and the bidding?
Okay, I think Doug did a good job of explaining it. We had close bids. Depending on how the alternates would be selected, there could be different combinations of different contractors that would be low. All four, all the bids, we had about, I think there was about eight bids within $30,000, $40,000. So they're all very close, and two of them could go either way. The base bid is the work that was on the original project as we started last summer. The alternates were scope issues that were desirable to enhance and make the project a better facility. One of them that was mentioned was the parking lot in the back. The major part of that is to remove water and a storm sewer from an area that's very wet in the back part of the facility. It also provides a place for bus parking in the front, so visitor buses can park and pull off away from the main entrance, and as a safety issue, the students and people exiting the building would not have to walk in front of the bus into the traffic. Another one is the signage. It does include, the second alternate illuminated lights, signs on the outside and also the signs on the inside of the building. Third one was the flagpoles, and the fourth was including the resilient flooring that's needed in the locker room areas originally. And the last, when the Blue Line Club was built, the city staff did that themselves. But that's where these items are coming from.
If you could just hold.
Do any councilmembers have any questions or comments about this? A large project. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm confused, and that happens frequently. But in one place, we're talking about looking at $1,76,500, and another place, we're looking at $935,500. Is that difference, the alternates?
No.
The $935,500 is the base bid plus the alternates. The other was the project cost. It includes the architecture engineering, plus it has a 5% contingency if issues would come up. But the contract that's being awarded would be for the $935,500. Okay, I understand. Thank you. The other issue deals with the budget, if I remember right.
Councilmember Reese.
I'd just like to point out, and Rich said it, how competitive the bids were. If you look at the bid sheet between, and for the public's information, just on the base bid alone, there was only $280 between number one and number two. And I think between all the bidders, what do we have, 10? 10 in all?
We had 10 bidders.
We had 10 bidders, and I believe we had like a 10% disparity from bottom to top.
Less than 10%.
Less than 10%. So they're very competitive bids and very close. So I think we're getting a real good bang for our dollar.
Okay. Richard, when do you anticipate this would start, and when do you think it might finish?
The plan would be to get the contracts done as soon as possible so the steel can be ordered. They would start construction when weather permits, this spring. Maybe it's April, whatever. The goal is it'll be operational October 1.
Before the hockey season?
Correct. And there will be a two-month, or a two-week break or so in the summer for the Sunshine Festival.
Really? So there are just no workers there at all for two weeks?
Maybe it isn't exactly two weeks, but that period of time, not much will be accomplished, or maybe it's one week.
Okay. Any other comments here? Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Bill, Mr. Mayor. I guess I think that we need to do a connection, but I voiced this concern before. I think it's a credibility issue for the council. When we told the voting public that we would spend $300,000, and now we're spending $1,000,000, and for that reason, I can't support this.
Well, Richard, do you want to comment on how the cost rose?
Yes. When we were hired, the first thing we did was a study. We had the information of the bond issue. There were, if I remember right, four major items. One was a link, one was locker rooms. I don't have it in front of me, I'm alluding to some of those requirements. We did a plan to scale those back. We could have a link, but it would not be a lobby. One of the issues that was brought up is that we really want this to be a point where visitors to our community are greeted to our community, and more than an eight-foot hallway would be needed to accommodate those kinds of groups. That a lobby is really what the intent is. The wording in the bond issue did not necessarily, it was a couple sentences that did not define what some of the needs are. I think the needs in the facility we're going, are going beyond the basic letters of that, but it really is the intent and the spirit of what is, I think the committees have felt was needed for the facility.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I would just make the comment that we're probably four years removed from making those original estimates, and I don't know what happened, well, I know what happened, but I don't know to what extent it's impacted our project. Obviously, it's a big number, but the cost of materials for this project in the last four years is huge. If you look at the Civic Center, the issue that was presented in the referendum, we said that we were going to build the new corridor, locker room, dressing room, and a new south entrance to the two buildings. And what we're ending up with here virtually mirrors what we talked about when we decided to place that matter on the referendum.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second for a resolution to go ahead with this. Any further comments? Roll call. Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. The resolution passes. Richard, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to revise the budget to the $1,076,500.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution that revises the budget for this project to $1,076,500. Further comment? Roll call. Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. The resolution passes.
Next item on our agenda was the wastewater treatment plant in the January monthly report, which was reviewed by the committee and delivered to us by Donahue and Associates. The infrastructure management plan for the planning phase has been finished, and updated evaluations of alternative conveyance routes and cost estimates were given to the committee with consideration of both impacts and costs of relocating the new facility from County Road 116 to an alternative site on County Road 5. These options were presented to the committee on February 6th. There was a citywide meeting, informational meeting for the public held, and the question that was given to us was, should the city consider relocating the plant closer to town along the east side of County Road 5? And I believe that most of us who were there as a council and the mayor, and I believe that that night, that question was well answered by the reactions that we got from those attending the meeting. And, Mr. Mayor, I would question, you know, how do we get there? And I think we stay the course, as we've heard from the public, and stay the course with our original plan, running the transmission line in the location that has been identified previously. And if it's appropriate, I guess I would like to make a motion that we continue along that path and that we stay with the original plan and locate the wastewater treatment plant at the original site on County Road 116.
Second. We have a motion and a second that states that the council wishes to stay the course, which means planning the wastewater treatment plant for the original site on County Road 116, where the brush site is, the trap chute range is, the, some, a couple of buildings are out there already, it's city-owned land. Let's talk about this a little bit.
Yeah, I think we should have comments from probably our city administrator and from Mr. Holmes, from Donahue and Associates, and maybe even from our city attorneys in regards to this decision.
Mick, do you want to start this?
Mr. Mayor, are you talking specifically about the site issue?
You mean questions? I think the whole aspect of pursuing the original intent of locating at County Road 116 and the possible upcoming, going through land that we were having difficulties and maybe addressing some of that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with regard to the site issue, and I know, I even suggested some ideas for Mr. Reese as to how to present this, but in retrospect, I'm sitting here thinking that the site issue doesn't really need an action on the part of the council. The council's already made a decision to build the facility at that location, and unless you were going to change that, I don't know that we would need to formally do anything about site. But that's one issue. You know, the question at the informational meeting was, should we, given the obstacles we've encountered and the additional costs that would be incurred to go around those obstacles, consider moving the facility closer to the community along the east side of County Road 5? And you would actually, I guess, at that point, if that was your intent, make a motion to do so. But I haven't been hearing that since the informational meeting. So I think we move then on to the question of if we're going to stay the course and build the plant along the west side of County Road 116, then the question becomes, how do we get there? I raised the issue of the obstacles that we've encountered in getting access to the property. And the engineers have prepared some estimates with regard to the cost of circumventing those obstacles. And we've shared that information with the city council and with the general public. Is it the seven and a half?
It's about seven and three-quarter million to go around that property.
If the decision was made not to run the interceptor line west across the agricultural land to the new plant, we're estimating that it would cost an additional $7,750,000. Are we going up 30th?
It's up 30th Street.
We'd go up 30th Street to 40, west to 116, and down to the new plant.
But that assumes some pumping, does it not? And additional ongoing expenses because of that.
Councilmember Reese, that includes about a five-and-a-quarter million dollar pump station and...
Greg, excuse me, we need to have a microphone on you.
We've got.
The additional cost includes a pump station at about five-and-a-quarter million, and the balance of that is the additional two miles of pipeline, because we're offsetting one mile up to State Highway 40 and then back. Part of that's a large diameter gravity sewer, and part of that would be forest main, but that makes up that seven-and-three-quarter million dollars.
But the operation, maintenance, ongoing, over the...
The value of that for a period of 20 years is included in that figure.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Mick, could you also comment on the possible legal process here? If we go across that land?
I may defer to Rich. Both Rich and I, and Kevin as well, have been talking to a number of attorneys specifically about the issue of condemnation, if need be. And again, I'll let Rich maybe take a lead on that discussion. I would point out, though, that in whatever direction this conversation leads, it's important that we make a decision, because you will recall, we got to this point when the engineers came to us and said, "We're at the 30% design stage of this project." And this is a good time for us to sit back and make sure that we're doing or taking the right approach. Just kind of a self-assessment kind of process that they go through on these types of projects. And that's when we talked about not being able to access certain properties, did those cost analyses to go around, and then also did the work on trying to determine what savings there might be by moving the plant in further. But my point is simply that in order for us to continue on schedule, we're going to have to choose the course of action and move forward. We've identified the site, now how do we get there? And I'll let Rich explain what we've found with regard to the condemnation process and the ability of property owners to appeal any court findings, et cetera, and then we can open it up again.
Rich, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, I talked to one of the attorneys at, excuse me, Kennedy Engraven, it used to be Holmes Engraven, Kennedy Engraven, who works primarily in the area of condemnation work, discussed the fact situation with him and our concern as to whether the property owner had a good likelihood of being successful in convincing a court that we were unable to show a necessity to go through his field and that we should go around instead of going straight through it. This attorney's opinion, based on his work in the area, was that that would not be a meritorious defense on the part of the landowner and that the court would not make us go around and that we would be able to go straight through. We also talked at the public meeting at the fire station about getting off schedule and not being able to comply with the December 2010 deadline and ramifications from the PCA, possible monetary penalties and that kind of thing. I talked to an attorney at the League of Minnesota Cities who recently came to the League of Minnesota Cities from PCA. He worked with this type of issue, and he is confident that as long as our engineer stays in touch with PCA and keeps them abreast of any problems we run into, if the project is delayed because of litigation, that we would not have to be concerned about the hammer dropping on us by PCA and the levying of monetary fees. He said in his experience at the PCA, as long as PCA was kept informed on what was going on and why there was a delay and that kind of thing, there would not be any problems presented to the city by PCA.
All right, thank you, Rich. Councilmembers, do you want to ask any questions or make any comments here?
Well, I guess I made a motion, and it was seconded, and maybe it wasn't appropriate. And I thought about that earlier, and maybe, you know, since we've already said that that is our... that is our preference, we have not changed that. Um, I probably, uh, I probably, uh, I can withdraw the motion and, uh, we'll just continue on, on our direction.
All right, so you withdraw the motion?
Sure.
And the person, Jim?
Yes, I'll withdraw my second, yep.
You withdraw my second? All right. Uh, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What kind of timing are we looking at, Rich, as far as condemnation and court proceedings? How long could this take? And, and in regards to cost, what would it cost us?
The first step is to get the property appraised so that we know, uh, what our appraiser is telling us we have to pay either for an easement or to actually acquire title to the property. After we have that figure by statute, we're required to, uh, negotiate with the property owners for 60 days. If cannot be resolved within 60 days, then we can go to court for the quick take. The quick take takes 120 days and if there's going to be an appeal, the appeal has to be filed within 60 days of the, uh, determination of the court, uh, at the local level. So that's the basic time parameters we're looking at.
240 days and before we could start anything, basically?
From the time you have the appraisal.
And, uh, you, you stated that we could actually, uh, purchase the land and own it rather than easement?
We could go either way and, uh, Mr. Schmidt and I were talking about that today. We probably, uh, would want to consider, uh, having an appraisal on each, and I think they're gonna be pretty similar. Uh, that's been the trend over the last, uh, 10, 15, 20 years, that, uh, the amount that you're gonna pay for a permanent easement is gonna be pretty close to what you would pay for actually having title to the property.
So you're saying it'd be better for us to have the title of the property because-
No, I'm not saying that at all. I think, uh, I think we should be flexible. I think some of the property owners would prefer that we have an easement, others might prefer that we take title to it. So, uh, there isn't a whole lot of difference. If we have an easement and it's agricultural land, when we're done out there, the, uh, landowner can continue to farm. Uh, if we own it, then we probably would not, uh, be leasing out a small strip like that for agricultural purposes, so, uh, probably there would not be any agricultural activities going on there. The other difference would be if we have an easement, uh, we do not pay real estate taxes. The property owner would continue to pay real estate taxes because they continue to own the property.
How large of an easement does that take? I mean, as far as width, what, what are we looking at? Is it 100 feet, 200 feet, 50 feet?
And that width would be 200 feet.
200-foot easement. And there would be, uh, um, manhole covers along there for maintenance or whatever?
Manhole covers would be spaced at intervals not exceeding 800 feet.
And how many would that be in that couple of miles that we're looking at there?
That's, um-
Maybe 10 or more?
Oh, there'd be more than that. That's, uh, that's, uh, seven a mile, that's, uh, about 40 of them.
Wow.
That's from one end to the other.
And you'd have to farm around that then, basically?
Where the fields are.
Because those are not buried, they're exposed, they're above ground and-
There are occasions where we will bury them. Um, you know, the, the advantage is that the agriculture can continue regardless of having it there. The downside is if the city needs to gain access, they've gotta excavate it to expose it.
You know, we've dealt with this landowner for how many years? Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we can go to court and, I, I hear what we're just saying and Mick, and they've talked about it, but I, I could see something else happening like the airport and take years and years and years, and, uh, we do need to get this planned up and running, but, uh, I'm open to suggestions too.
Councilmember Reese?
Craig, you said 40 manholes, but the, across this disputed property is only one mile, is it not?
That's 10, that's two miles.
That's two miles, so that's about 12 manholes, 12, 13 manholes.
Between County Road, uh, 116 and County Road 5 is two miles.
Okay, but that's about 12, 13 manholes. I, I, I did the calculation quick on, on 5,280 by 800, so-
That's right.
Um, that's 6.6 per mile. So the 40 was the distance of the-
Total distance.
Interceptor.
Councilmember Docket?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning, I received a call from one of the property owners and he, uh, had several concerns that he, uh, that we talked about. And so I stopped by and I talked with Mr. Holmes today about those, uh, concerns of his. He has a concern that, uh, that this interceptor line will run close to County Ditch 46 and 10. And he stated that, that at frequent intervals, that ditch floods. And with those, uh, manhole covers, uh, uh, being spaced at 800 feet, that, uh, that, that they could leak. And I'd like for Mr. Holmes to comment about all of this, but he tells me that they are sealed and tight and will not leak. He's also concerned with the fuel, uh, tile that come, uh, and drain into the ditch there, 46 and 10. And Mr. Holmes told me that, uh, that they will film those, uh, drain fields and make sure that, uh, that that situation doesn't become a problem. And so after, uh, after visiting with Mr. Holmes, uh, uh, receiving his assurance that those are not real concerns, but I'd like for you to just briefly go over what we talked about today.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, anytime we cross private property, anytime we build underground utility anyplace, we've got concerns with other utilities that we cross. When we built the interceptor sewer last summer that crossed 19th Avenue, we crossed a 24-inch pipe carrying all of the effluent from our existing wastewater plant. We, we located it, we exposed it, we excavated beneath it, we installed our new infrastructure, we backfilled it, we put it back together and inspected it, and everything runs fine. Um, the question that Councilmember Docket had about the manhole covers, interceptor sewers of this type are commonly built along waterways because we are following the, the natural drainage in the land. That's why we followed the drainage rays, rivers and creeks. In that regard, we have manholes on all of these interceptor sewers. The manholes are built to be waterproof, they're built differently than the standard manholes, and the covers are all bolted and gasketed to be sealed and watertight because we know that on occasion they'll go underwater. When we cross agricultural lands, particularly out here with, uh, the intensity of the drainage tiles, we understand that drainage tiles are critical to getting that farmland productive as early in the season as possible and keeping it open in wet weather. So recognizing that, when we cross drain tiles or whether we cross effluent sewers or whether we cross, cross high-pressure gas mains, we find them first, we inspect their condition, we use the utmost care when we cross them, we put it all back together, and in the case of these drain tiles, we've got a unique advantage because we can, we can run an inspection camera up that tile before we get there and we can inspect it when we're done, to demonstrate that the tile has been left intact throughout our construction. In fact, if, if we needed to, we could even come back, uh, time afterwards and inspect it again because it, it really isn't, isn't all that great an effort and considering how critical it is that those tiles remain in service to keep that farmland viable. I mean, that's certainly something we can do once we get that far.
And it's common engineering to follow a ditch?
Absolutely, for this type of sort.
Right. And also, you said that we could also lower, if it needed be, uh, four foot into the ground, uh, some of these manholes, is that not correct?
Yeah. Any one of these manholes could be buried completely when we're done, meaning that, um, the landowners can farm right through them. They could drag their implements right, right across the top of these manhole covers in order to find them and service them when that becomes necessary. And in this type of source, not very frequently, but it does happen, uh, we'd have ways of finding them, and then when they have to be serviced, excavating equipment would have to be taken out into the field and then we'd have to dig it back up again to expose it to enter it.
Thank you.
That's one of the factors to consider when we're, uh, trying to decide whether we should, uh, acquire fee title or an easement. If we were to acquire the property, we don't need to worry about the manholes. Those are all issues that we will have to talk about when, when it comes time to make a decision on which, um, which, uh, alternative to select.
Anyone else here? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're talking about a seven-and-three-quarter million dollar effort if we go up and over and around. Um, I'm not asking anyone to put a figure on it, but I would assume that we're talking a lot less to go across this agricultural land. I mean, that would be a reasonable assumption to make overall, and I-
Well, that's seven and three-
That's over and above the cost of going across there.
That's, that's correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, if we go up and over and around, it's an extra almost $8 million. If we go across, our costs are much less, even with a condemnation.
Um, I would certainly hope so, yes.
All right. Anything else here? Uh, actually, there is no motion on the table now. Correct?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, uh, move to, uh, direct staff to seek appraisals of those, uh, privately-held lands along the proposed route of the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, uh, conveyance system.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to proceed, uh, with the original plan and get appraisals as they, as they can. Further comments about that? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to do the appraisals, is, is it necessary to go on the property or just view it, aerial? What, what do they, how do they do that? Maybe Rick can answer that.
Do it both ways.
I mean, is it necessary though to be on the land? Because we know that, not gonna let your step foot on-
We've got soil maps from the, uh, ag department, the county, so it's not necessary.
Okay. The, uh, option of purchasing it, uh, if we own the land, we don't have to worry about the manhole cover, or the manholes, you say, but we still have to worry about the tile. That's gotta be connected either way, right? I mean, you can't just buy it and then say, "Well, we're not gonna have tile below her."
No, we, we have to, we have to construct that, uh, interceptor sewer with regard to the tile no matter what we do because we have to maintain the, the property that's upstream of there, the property that's south of, of the, uh, creek in viable use for agriculture. So we have to restore the tile no matter how we do that.
I, I have a question, Craig.
Yes, sir.
That County Ditch meanders, and sometimes the interceptor line would be on the south side, sometimes it'd be on the north side, is that correct? Or, or would you try to run it on one side of the-
Mr. Mayor, that far west, once we're west of County Road 5, we would stay south of County Ditch 46. Now, in order to try to impact agriculture as little as possible, we probably would try to stay as close to County Ditch 46 as we practically could. In other words, it does, there's an area where it wanders quite a bit from the section line. We'd have to take a look at what it would take to, to, if we can, stay close to it, and if not, cross that piece of land where it does oxbow to the north a little bit and see if we can do that without putting a manhole in the middle of the field.
Who owns the County Ditch? The county or the state?
That's, um, I don't know, is that on to the side of the ditch?
Rich, do you know?
Normally, it's by easement, uh, so the farmer owns the ditch, subject to the easement of the ditch authority to have the ditch there.
Because it's not shown on the map as far as I know.
Councilmember Reese?
I, I don't know who wants the answer for this, Rich or Mick or who, but, uh, this appraisal process, is it more than one appraisal? And how do you determine? Do you just pick an appraiser or is this something that has to go by the courts or what to substantiate it? Do you know?
Well, uh, I, in these early stages, we would just, uh, secure the services of one appraiser. Uh, sometimes they, uh, a review appraiser is used to, uh, you can do two appraisals and have it reviewed. You get to a condemnation proceeding, then you're dealing with your appraisal and the property owner's appraisal.
So the court doesn't, when you, if you, if it does go to that point, the court doesn't appoint an appraiser and, I guess that's what I was wondering. No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If, if what's at issue in court is the value, then yes, the court appoints three, they call them commissioners, but they're appraisers, to determine the value. But I'm not sure, you know, if that's gonna be the issue with the person that's, you know, principally the objector here, but I'm assuming if, uh, the court gives us the green light to go ahead, then yes, he'll argue about the value too. And so ultimately, the court does appoint three appraisers to determine what the value is. If the, either side is not happy with what the three commissioners come up with, then it goes to a jury to decide what the fair value is.
Okay, then I understand the process, thank you.
Council, or, done, Doug?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, proposed line is following a section line, if I'm not mistaken, is that right?
For the most part, yes.
So if there were ever a future road, that's where we'd go?
Would be a good choice in a location road.
Are we, are we finished dealing with this individual, this landowner, as far as the airport goes? Everything is done, clear?
No.
We aren't? So we're still, can that create another problem? Or can that prolong that process? And we all know-
I don't, I don't know that, that I would base my decisions on the wastewater treatment plant project, on my experiences with the airport project.
The only reason I ask is, I mean, we had a lot of advice from this particular individual that we probably should've taken and we maybe might not have had some of the problems we had at the airport site. That's why I ask. Is it costing us more money dealing with them because of this problem, Mick? I mean-
Well, there's a big difference between advice and opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, and the, I, I'm listening to people that, tonight, that are saying that they've talked to property owners out in this area. I've had these same conversations. I've talked to these property owners on a weekly basis-
For years.
The last three weeks regarding this issue of the, um, the wastewater treatment plant and the placement of the interceptor line. I have included all of the engineers in those discussions that were intended to specifically address the issues and concerns that he had, and every time that we responded to an issue or a question or a concern, he disagreed. So we made no progress whatsoever. I don't expect that any progress, uh, will be made in the near future.
As long as we continue along this route. If, if we were to bypass and go up to 40 and head west, um, the big advantage I see there is we own most of the property along the way. I know it's gonna cost seven-and-three-quarter billion dollars more, but, uh, I just look at the hassle factor and I, I'm not convinced that we should go straight. I just, uh, I just have a concern for what we may be going through.
Councilmember DeBleek?
Yeah, I have a question for city attorney. With, um, condemnation process, is there a requirement to prove a public need or purpose with, before we can go to condemnation? Or what do we all have to prove in the courts?
Public purpose, I think, is a given here. Waste treatment plants are definitely a public purpose, so I don't think that's gonna be in dispute. The dispute is gonna be the necessity of going the route that we choose to go.
And do we have to prove any kind of a public purpose or reason for selecting the route that we do follow?
Well, the public purpose issue is with the project itself. You established that, uh, there is a public purpose for this project and, yes, you have to have testimony. Craig gets on the stand and says in his opinion, "And, uh, there is a public purpose for a waste treatment plant in the city of Willmar." End of discussion, basically. End of discussion, basically. Then the question is, okay, how are you gonna get there? And as far as public purpose and necessity, they're very, very similar concepts.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rich, just because there might be another alternative, in the opinion of the folks that you've talked to and in your own opinion, just because there might be another alternative doesn't necessarily mean that a court is going to say, "Well, you had, you had another alternative here, you should've followed it."
Well, there usually is more than one alternative to do practically anything, and so it's a question of whether the course that the city chooses is prudent. That's what it really gets down to, and if the city can support why they chose the route they chose, and that makes sense, then I would expect the court would approve it.
And in the opinion of the folks that you had your discussions with, both at Kennedy and Graven and at the league, they seemed confident that there was a high probability that we would prevail?
I think that's accurate.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the table to direct staff to go forward with the appraisal process. Are you ready to vote on that? Everybody ready?
Call to question.
Call to question? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Abstain.
Okay, the motion carries, seven to zero, with one abstention. All right, back to Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would assume then, Mr. Holmes, that the environmental assessment worksheet and also the national pollution discharge elimination-
NPD, yes. Very good.
System. Where that will be submitted now?
What we'll need is a right of entry in some of those lands to do some field work, and I'll have to work with staff to get that right of entry, because it's been denied. So, we may need some, some legal action to gain entry to some of those parcels.
Okay. Some construction-related activity in regards to this whole project. Donahue has rejected S.J. Lewis's differing site conditions claim for the interceptor project. Due to lack of merit, S.J. Lewis has requested a meeting to explore means of resolving this matter, and construction plans and specs were prepared to install an excess flow pump at the existing facility as an interim improvement to be relocated to the new plant. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is, is-
Just a second, Doug. Craig, what is the essence of that claim? Why are they claiming a different site condition?
Mr. Mayor, just north of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, a contractor encountered the materials that were essentially shown on the soil borings that were advanced before construction ever began. When the contractor got into that soil, it slowed his, slowed his progress and caused problems because the soil wasn't dewatered as was specified. So, the contractor has alleged that the conditions encountered were different than the alleged conditions that the contractor expected at the time he bid it. After a pretty thorough analysis of contractor's claim and a complete analysis of the contract documents governing that construction, I determined that the contractor's claim for additional costs under a differing site condition approach was without merit, so I denied the claim.
All right.
By the contract documents, the next step the contractor may take is to request mediation. The contractor has, has asked if it can delay the, the start of mediation to, to dialogue yet with the city, and that's what we've agreed to.
All right. Thank you. Okay, back to you, Doug.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda was some concerns from our police chief in regards to ultimate fighting and the possibility of this taking place within our, our city. Other communities have dealt with this. They've done it through different actions, all the way up to banning the, this type of activity within their city. And there was a motion made second and passed, which I will move to the, to the council to have staff prepare a draft ordinance banning ultimate fighting within the corporate limits of the city of Wilmer, and that the ordinance be brought back to committee for discussion at a later date.
Second? We have a motion in a second to direct staff to, to prepare a draft ordinance banning ultimate fighting within the corporate limits of the city. Further comment about this? Chief, could I ask you, would you just define what ultimate fighting is? If you can?
I can use the definition that's used in the Red Wing City Ordinance. It basically says, "Ultimate fighting shall mean any activity regardless of how named and described or any other form of entertainment where the primary practice involves individuals engaged in physical contact by striking, touching an opponent with hands, feet, head, or body." And it goes on to talk about kicking, punching, submission holes, et cetera. Legalize street fighting.
Street fighting, basically?
Legalize street fighting.
Okay. And what's your concern about this, chief?
Well, the tendency for it to, you know, excite the audience. You know, the, the whole issue of, of the combatants themselves, I don't think is the concern. The concern is, is the volatility that it creates in the audience. And like I explained to the committee, cities have taken several different approaches, anything from regulating them, not allowing alcohol with the activity, to requiring security to banning them. And we brought it to the committee last week as kind of a proactive measure, because we had heard that there was an individual that was interested in promoting them in our community. And there was also reports that the city of Red Wing had banned them. So, prior to, you know, being confronted with this issue locally, we decided to bring it to committee and, and get the council's take on it.
All right. Thank you, chief. Taking a proactive approach here. Any other comments? All right, go ahead, Doug. Well, that's a motion.
Motion.
All right. Kevin, that's a roll call, right?
No.
Just a draft ordinance. Those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item was a discussion in regards to an area within our city that's been called Bum's Alley, and I hope in the future that it'll be an endearing term for this area. And incorporating this area into the city's hiking and biking and park system by cleaning up the area and establishing rest areas, benches, picnic tables, and this items for information only, for the only request from the committee right now is that staff determine ownership of the property and the feasibility of developing the areas proposed. I've also received some correspondence from the design team, from Bev Doherty, that she would like to be at the next Public Works Public Safety Meeting to discuss the same first. They have done some work and have some visions, similar visions for this area. So, this is for information only, Mr. Mayor. The fourth item was from our community ed and rec director, Steve Bresendine, and it's a request to submit a grant application to the Department of Natural Resources. This is a trail grant for a hundred thousand dollars, and it would enhance our existing trail system and would be utilizing the local option sales tax program. So, I would move to allow staff's submittal of this grant application, Mr. Mayor.
Second? We have a motion in a second to allow staff's submittal of the grant application for a trail grant. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Unless there's questions, Mr. Mayor, I will move to file a minutes.
Second? We have a motion in a second to file these minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, the Labor Relations Committee report for February fourteenth. Is that, Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Labor Relations Committee met on Wednesday, February fourteenth, at four forty-five. We met thereafter in closed session for approximately an hour or two, discuss Rice Hospital Municipal Utilities and City Employment Contract negotiations. At five forty-five PM, we reopened that meeting, and following a brief discussion, it was moved to recommend to the council that a new employment agreement with Law Enforcement Labor Services, Inc., be approved. Generally speaking, it's a three-year contract, January one through this year, through December thirty-first of two thousand and nine, providing for a three percent general wage increase in each of the three years. There were some other provisions, including a new step in salary schedule adjustment for market conditions, exchange of the Columbus Day holiday for the day after Thanksgiving, and the implement, implementation of a VIBA health insurance program scheduled to take effect January one, two thousand and eight. And, Mr. Mayor, I move the recommendation of the committee.
Second? We have a motion in a second to move the recommendation for this three-year law enforcement labor services contract. Further comment? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is the, the thinking behind taking off the day after Thanksgiving, giving up Columbus Day, other than just having two days in a row? I mean, why is, what's the rationale for that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the issue of exchanging dates has been one that we've wrestled with for many, many years, and we, we've often found ourselves at, not a disadvantage or an advantage, but at, and because the county has been doing this for many years, the county offices are closed when we're open on one holiday and vice versa on the other. So, it was, and there are a lot of other businesses and organizations that shut down on that day after Thanksgiving. It's not a very productive day for us, if, if you wanna know the truth. A lot of employees wanna take that day off anyways, so the bargaining groups, all of them, have been talking about the idea of exchanging those dates for a number of years. We've never been receptive to that request, mainly because we haven't been able to get everybody to agree. And so, we've worked out a solution now that may exclude a portion of, of one group, similar to what the county does, but there'll be some continuity throughout the organization then.
How do you handle this on operations that run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Is that, is that a scheduling problem? Could that be a scheduling problem?
Be like any other day. You referring to police?
Right.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's hope they don't decide to take all their vacation days in one week. What's the rationale behind the schedule adjustment for market conditions? Is that because of comparing it to other cities, or what?
No, I advised the council early on in the process that we were having some difficulty retaining our, some of our top officers who were leaving for higher paid positions in the Kennewah County Sheriff's Department. And in order to stop that trend, and there was a big gap between what a top patrol officer for the city is paid and deputy sheriff in that top position. We had to close that gap, and that's what that market condition references. We added some steps to the, the schedule that, at the end of that schedule, our top rates are essentially comparable to, or the same as the county's.
I know we've been dealing with that for years and years and years, probably a decade.
Yeah, and it became much more of an issue in the past year alone, when we lost three officers to the county.
So, we're, we're closing the gap, we aren't really up to their-
This new pay schedule in their contract will close the gap.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Simple motion.
Simple motion. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We then visited, and there was a recommendation made to the council out of committee that a new three-year employment agreement with the department head, first-line supervisor, and confidential employees be improved. This three-year agreement is for a term beginning January one, two thousand and seven, through December thirty-first, two thousand and nine, and this also includes a three percent wage adjustment in each of the three years. Other notable provisions include a three hundred and fifty dollar per month vehicle allowance for department directors, not assigned city-owned vehicles, exchange of the Columbus Day holiday for the day after Thanksgiving, and the implementation of a VIBA health insurance program scheduled for implementation on January one, two thousand and eight. And, Mr. Mayor, I move the recommendation of the committee.
Second? We have a motion in a second to approve the three-year employment agreement with department head, first-line supervisor, and confidential employees. Further comment about this? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't at this Labor Relations meeting, so what's the rationale behind the three fifty a month vehicle allowance? Is this new? I mean-
This is new. It was a request brought to the council from the group. I supported it. There are two directors that are currently assigned vehicles for use in their, three in their positions, and for those directors that are not assigned, we recommended to the committee that a vehicle allowance be provided.
How many, how many directors does that include? Total number?
Six.
Six? Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Three have vehicle, would have vehicles under this arrangement, three would receive the allowance.
Okay.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could somebody explain the VIBA health insurance program? I have no idea what that is. Just a brief-
Sure. And I, I wondered if we wouldn't get that, and the, Kevin was nice enough to provide me with, with a capsule summary. It's a, it's a high deductible insurance, a medical insurance plan, and it's paired with a employer-funded personal health spending account. It, it's tax-free, interest-bearing, and it helps the employee pay for part of the deductible medical claims. The advantage for them, of course, here is that they, the unused dollars, unlike a flex comp plan that you would find in the private sector, the unused dollars roll over, and they can be added to the next year, starting them out all the way up until retirement.
Is this something they're gonna be required to do, or this is an option?
It's optional. We're gearing up to implement it on January one of two thousand and eight. The net result is a reduction in premium, and there are savings to both the employer and the employee. So, you know, we have to market the concept, the program, to the employee, and we'll get it up and running. We'll get, we'll meet the required threshold for implementation.
I imagine this is probably more advantageous to the younger workers than it is the older ones? Is that-
Um, yes, it's, it's advantageous to the healthy employee-
Okay.
-versus those that may incur, as a family, a lot of medical expense.
There are, there are similar programs in the private sector, and VIBA, I believe the school district implemented about two years ago.
Yes.
And there are similar programs in the private sector, but they're called HSAs or, and HRAs, and those do roll over, just like a VIBA, so that when you come to retire- And those do roll over, just like a VIBA, so that when you come to retirement, if you haven't utilized those dollars, you can use them for supplemental insurances.
Thank you.
Any other comments here? Those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing further from the council, I move to file the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next is the Community Development Committee Report of February 15. Councilmember DeBleek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was Northern Factory Sales, discussion of a tax abatement. There was discussion in the committee that possibly of a short-term partial tax abatement for Northern Factory Sales. Kathy Swantus, the Assistant Director of the EDC, provided background on the company and its products. This company recently moved from a 33,000-square-foot building on Trotta Avenue to a 76,000-foot building, which was formerly the Somini Supply Building. The move resulted in a major increase in their real estate taxes, and they considered but rejected the idea of a partially... Participating in the jobs program is they thought that this -- they were not comfortable with the idea of not having to pay real estate taxes on their new facility. Working with the EDC and city staff, the idea of a partial tax abatement was raised. Roger Koke, co-owner of Northern Factory Sales, told the committee that their company -- what they do and what type of products they have, and they are a distributor of vehicle cooling equipment and have 14 facilities across the United States. Mr. Koke informed the committee about past employment growth and future projections and how they were hiring workers and going through some major transitions. The committee reviewed a five-year partial tax abatement proposal based on the company's real estate taxes, which is part of the agenda here, and proposed abatements represented only the taxes payable to the city, county, and school district. And when phased in, a tax increase as the company ramps up production at its new building. The company's commitments to minimum job growths of five positions over the next five years, and Northern Factory Sales jobs exceeds the minimum wage requirements, the city of $10 per hour. Following considerable discussion, there was a motion and a recommendation from the committee that we set a public hearing for the required business subsidy tax abatement agreement, and set that public hearing for March 5 of 2007. I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for the required business subsidy tax abatement agreement. Further comment about this? Those in favor of the motion to set a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Item two on our agenda was FeedLogic Systems. FeedLogic Systems Incorporated is a former Washington state company, which started operations at the Midwest Technology Campus as of March 1, 2007. The company is a manufacturer of intelligent livestock feeding systems, and the entire Midwest campus was formally granted jobs status or Job Z status, with all unoccupied buildings being granted tax abatement for the life of the Job Z program. The state statute requires city approval for companies to qualify for Job Zs, even within an approved zone. The state approval is also required. The business meets the state standards for Job Z qualifications. In addition to meeting Job Z requirements, the company has a tremendous synergy with existing local businesses and livestock industry, and the company's goals are to create a minimum of five jobs over the first year and make capital improvements to the real estate they are occupying at the Midwest campus. All positions will pay in excess of the minimum $10 per hour required by the city, and Kathy Swantus of the EDC was present to field questions regarding FeedLogic's proposals. After discussion, there was a recommendation made that we set a Job Z business subsidy public hearing for FeedLogic on March 5 of 2007, and I'll introduce that recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for this Job Z business subsidy hearing for FeedLogic Systems on March 5. Further comment about this? Those in favor of setting the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, we discussed the Housing Conditions Task Force. The committee reviewed goals of the proposed Housing Condition Task Force as established at and discussed at the recent city council staff retreat. The goals were to review current standards related to residential conditions and make recommendations for changes to the policies and enforcement codes and methods. The committee also offered some ideas for the makeup of the task force. It was suggested that the task force consider -- be -- consist of 16 citizens representing all four wards. Additionally, that staff and city attorney should be involved in the task force, and that task force members should represent different economic backgrounds. There should be a mix of owners, renters, landlords, and developers, and as much as possible, a good mix of age, race, and length of residency, but also considered on the task force. Through discussion, there was a motion made and recommended that the mayor appoint a task force to review residential policies and ordinances and to make recommendations related to conditions in policy enforcement. And it was further agreed by that the council should suggest possible task force members to the mayor. And I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second. The mayor appoint a task force to review residential policies and ordinances and make recommendations related to changes in policy and enforcement. Comment or questions about this? Councilmember Fagerly?
So when do you want to start?
Well, what I would like to suggest is that each council member, in order to ensure that we have good representation across the city, that each of you submit to me at least two names. That would give me a pool of 16 people, and there probably would be some overlap, and not all 16 would be applied or would be appointed to the committee, but that would give me a good starting pool of citizens. So I'd like each of you to think about that and who you would recommend from your respective wards. Also, I would like to see at least two council members on this committee. And you don't have to say anything tonight, but I'd like you to think whether or not you would like to be one of those two council members and make that known to me. Otherwise, I will appoint two council members. So if you want to talk about it or think about it, that's just fine. And then I will also do some recruiting. I know the Business Design Center down -- the Design Center for Downtown Wilmer has already asked me if they can have a representative, and I assured them that they could. And I'd like to see who you recommend, and if there's not somebody there from a couple of groups such as senior citizens or maybe the chamber, I want to make sure that they are also recognized and have representatives. The other group that I'd like to see on this committee are landlords. Make sure that we have landlord representation in this committee. But if each of you could submit to me two names from your ward, perhaps by the next council meeting, that gives you two weeks to think about it, and if you yourself are interested as a council member to be on this committee, make that known also. And then we'll put it together and we'll set it up. Is that fair enough? Councilmember Fagerly?
I know at the committee meeting, Councilman Dawkin wished to be on it, and Councilperson Swenson wanted to be on it.
Is that true? Is that -- you want to do this?
Mm-hmm.
Do other council members have any problem with that? Anybody else?
I think these meetings would be posted and published.
Oh, yeah, they'd be publicly...
All council members could attend, but we may not participate in the meeting, and that'd be correct.
All right. That would be fine if Councilmembers Swenson and Dawkin would like to be on the committee. Did you -- Ron, did you want to be on it?
Just two council members.
Okay. And there should be somebody there from the construction trades when we're dealing with outside appearances and setbacks, things like that, parking chases and impacts on lots. So think about that, and then try to get it going. Another question I have, I saw in the support materials that there is a draft brochure that was put together by staff. Is that correct? So, you know, that's a starting point, but I'm sure that's not the end product. That's simply a draft, but that's something to start with. Any other comments about this? Okay, then I'll wait for your recommendations, and hopefully within two weeks, we'll have a pool of candidates here. All right, those in favor of that motion, then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Fourth item on our agenda, Mr. Mayor, was the County Road 47 right-of-way. Staff presented a proposal to the committee to swap a piece of city-owned land with a private property owner to complete the acquisition of right-of-way for the extension of County Road 47. The private property owner, Harland Roner, and the proposed right-of-way swap would involve about a .55 acre tract of city-owned property, which was part of the former airport. After discussion, there was a motion and a recommendation of the committee that the city take the necessary steps to work with the county to secure the right-of-way, including the swap of .55 acres with Harland Roner. And I think -- and I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second that the city take necessary steps to work with the county to secure right-of-way, including the swap of .55 acres with Harland Roner. This is to deal with a right-of-way issue. Further comment about this? Those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
After further discussion with the same issue, with the right-of-way value, it had been a position of the city all along to provide as much of the right-of-way for the extension of County Road 47 as possible, and the committee wanted to make sure that there was at least some recognition of value for the provision of the right-of-way. After discussion, there was a motion made and recommended that the value of the right-of-way for County Road 47 extension be recognized as an offset of the county cost or claims for any part of the County Road 47 project.
Second.
And I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, that the value of this right-of-way for County Road 47 be recognized as an offset to county costs or claims for part -- or for any part of the County Road 47 project. Further comment? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The committee had -- was provided updates from staff and updates. They had -- staff had recently returned from a trip to Washington, D.C., and with discussion with some of our federal representatives about various projects that we have within the city. And also, they had -- we reviewed the draft copy of the expectations for residential that handout that staff had prepared and has included as part of the minutes here. Since that concluded our meeting, Mr. Mayor, and if there are no questions, I'll motion to file these minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, I have two announcements here, one that I think came from the city attorney or from Mick. The DNR is going to host a public meeting on the proposed management of Lake Wakanda. This will be a public information meeting on the proposed fish and wildlife lake management plan for Lake Wakanda on February 26. The meeting will be held out at the Canoah County Health and Human Services Building, Room 30, from 7 to 9 p.m. Again, a DNR meeting about Lake Wakanda, February 26, 7 to 9 p.m., at the Health and Human Services Building. And it would be important to have some city personnel there. I'm sure there'll be one or two staff people, and I think it's important to have some elected officials, because I'm sure there'll be many representatives there from many groups and regional and county officials. So let's make sure the city is part of this, too. The other announcement is a very pleasant one, and that is that this coming weekend, there's going to be a figure skating program out at our Civic Arena. And I'm sure that many citizens are aware of this, but this is a local group called the Diamond Edge Figure Skating Club, and they have a wonderful show every year. It's held twice. It's held on 7 p.m. on March 3, which is a Saturday night, and again at 1 p.m. on March 4. And what makes it special this year, it's always a special event because it's our local children and -- who are very small and elementary age and teenagers. But this year, their guest skater is an Olympic gold medalist. Her name is Oksana Bayul, and she's from -- I think it's from Belarus or from perhaps one of those other countries there. But I remember her very vividly because she's the one who defeated the American skater for the gold medal. The American skater was Kerry -- anybody know who Kerry...
Skrugg?
No, that was a gymnast.
Nancy Kerrigan?
No. Was it Nancy Kerrigan?
She got the names.
Yes.
It just goes to show nobody remembers who finished second.
Anyway, Oksana Bayul is an Olympic gold medalist, and tickets are available for this. The tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for children. Tickets are available at Cashwise, Waltz, and at the Country Stop in New London. I think it's a wonderful event for parents and grandparents to bring their children and their grandkids to. I think it'd be a memorable kind of event. And I understand that she's going to be skating at least two times in each program, and they do just a great job on this figure skating event. So I hope the Wilmer community turns out very strongly, and get your tickets in advance, again at Waltz, Cashwise, or at the Country Stop in New London. $10 for adults, $5 for kids, Saturday night and Sunday afternoon. Next, the announcement of council committee meeting dates. Finance?
Mr. Mayor, Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 26th, 4:45.
Finance, Monday, February 26, 4:45. Public Works, Public Safety.
Tuesday, the 27th, 4:45.
February 27, Public Works, Public Safety, 4:45. Labor?
No meeting.
Community Development?
No meeting scheduled.
Okay. Any other announcements to come before the council tonight?
Mayor Heike? Mayor Heike, the Community Education and Recreation Advisory Council is this Friday, the 23rd, at 11:30, Washington Learning Center.
Okay. Community Education and Recreation Advisory Committee, Friday at 11:30 in the morning at Washington Elementary School. Thank you. Anything else? A motion?
So adjourned.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.